Lake Havasu City has a brand-new website. Visit www.lhcaz.gov today. Use your smartphone or tablet to access from anywhere. Stay connected and keep up with what's going on in Lake Havasu City.
I called order to Lake Havasu City Council regular meeting on Tuesday, June 13, 2017, at 6:00 p.m. We'll now have an invocation by Captain Bob Luarez.
Let's pray. Our most gracious and loving Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for this beautiful city that we live in. I just ask that you would be in and around in everything that happens here today and that you would have these people guide this city in a way that would be pleasing to you. And we just pray these things in Jesus' most precious name. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. With the city clerk, please call the roll.
Council members Mark Nixon?
Here.
Donna McCoy?
Here.
Jenny Koch?
Here.
Cal Sheehy?
Here.
Michelle Lynn?
Here.
David Lane?
Here.
Gordon Groth?
Here.
Okay. Item five on our agenda is our initial call to the public. This is where our citizens have an opportunity to address the council on issues within the jurisdiction of the city. If you do come up, we would ask that you state your name and spell your last name for the benefit of the city clerk. And you'll notice a little box to the right as you're standing there. Green means go. Yellow means you have one minute remaining. And red means five minutes have expired, which is our limit for the call to the public. Now, when you come up to the call to the public, we really can't address anything you have to say other than to ask the staff to follow up with you at a later date, or we can put it on a future agenda. So if you want to discuss something that is on the agenda, I suggest you wait for that item, and then we can have a two-way discussion. We do have one person who has signed up. However, if others want to speak, you can do that as well. Mr. Eigenbrot.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and city manager, members of the city council. My name is Michael Eigenbrot, and it is spelled E-I-G-E-N-B-R-O-D-T. And I am the president and CEO of Social Services Interagency Council of Lake Havasu I guess what I'd like to say is that for years, the organization through the three CEOs has enjoyed a good working relationship with the council. I have enjoyed that myself to this day, and I look for that to the future. The funding for interagency council comes primarily from three sources. It comes from grants. It comes from contracts. And it comes from donations. And donations are in kind and cash. Our total revenue right now is a little over $3 million. And traditionally, as I understand it in talking with some members of council, the money that we have received from Lake Havasu City has often been used as a match so we can leverage the community money and look at greater money come from state and federal. So for an example, in this current fiscal year, $117,000 of the city grant money was stated as a match for two federal and one state contract that produced over $546,000 in contracts for interagency council. That's the kind of system that the city has used and that we have used for a long time. The money that we have received from Lake Havasu City represents about 5% of our total gross revenue. We receive a little, in five-year average, about double that in cash donations. And so it's very important that we have a good reputation in town and that the town really realizes in our city those things that we are doing to help people be stronger in our community. And it is with that in mind that, effective immediately, Social Services Interagency Council, through a decision of my own and with the executive board, have decided to rescind all application and all grant funding for the next fiscal year. So I thank you very much. I look forward to working with the city continued. Those things that the city needs, if there's some way that we can help, we're definitely going to be there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would anybody else like to address the council? Seeing none, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. Would any of the council members like to remove any of the items for separate discussion? Hearing none, do we have a motion?
Mayor?
Yes.
Motion?
Please.
I move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
All right, we do have a motion and a second to accept the consent agenda as presented. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
All right. Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to move on to item seven, which is correspondence, communications, petitions, announcements, and the city manager report. First up, our city clerk will announce vacancies on the Lake Havasu City boards, committees, and commissions. Kelly?
Mayor and city council, there are a number of vacancies on the Lake Havasu City Board, committees, and commissions. The following listing is the vacancies that are current and also upcoming vacancies. Airport Advisory Board, four regular pilot members, one regular non-pilot member; two alternate pilot members, one alternate non-pilot member; Board of Adjustment, ten regular members, three alternate members; Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, three regular members, one student member; Planning and Zoning Commission, one regular member, one alternate member; and the Public Safety Personnel Retirement System, one regular member. Anyone interested can pick up a packet at City Hall, and they are also available on the city's website.
All right. Thank you very much. Item 7.2 is our city manager's report. Mr. Casson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council. I'm pleased to report that thanks to the efforts of Tabitha Miller and the administrative services staff, the city was once again awarded with the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting by the Government Finance Officers Association for the city's Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, or CAFR. This is the highest form of recognition in governmental accounting and financial reporting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by a government and its management. So congratulations to Tabitha and her staff. Steve, if we could key up on my screen here. Once again this month, I want to show you the April of 2017 transaction privilege tax and sales tax report. Our total tax revenues fiscal year-to-date are about 6.6% above last year's revenues. And in April, just April, month-to-month, it's about... I'll get it. It's about...
That was the best one.
I thought Jimmy.
Made you look, Dean. So month-to-month this year-to-last, we're about 8.7% higher. They're not giving up. Fiscal year-to-date total revenues are just about 1% within projections. So we're very pleased at what we're seeing here. And the graph that we have up on the screen now is one that you've seen many times before. This is each year's sales tax, both the transaction privilege tax plus the hotel motel tax, or what we call the bed tax, plus the restaurant and bar tax shown going all the way back to the 2007 fiscal year, which we considered our peak year or pre-recession period. So I'm very happy to finally report. And if you look at the bottom row of numbers, the 2% city sales tax collected, all the way back in 2007, which was our peak year, at $15.498 million. You move all the way over to the right, which is this fiscal year-to-date, to April, it's $15.879 million. So I'm very pleased to report to you that our transaction privilege tax collections are now exceeding pre-recession levels. One other thing I want to show you while I have the screen up is the new trailhead facility out at Sarah Park. And last time I showed you, they had just completed the paving, and I was very proud of that. And now we're approaching a completion, a full completion. And you'll notice the restroom has been placed off to the right there. The emergency vehicle gateway is off to the left in the background, and also the trail map kiosk is in the far distant background. You can see it's already being used. The barricades have been removed. It is open for use. The water's not on in the bathroom just yet, but they're working on it. And shortly, there will be a very fancy drinking fountain out there that we're waiting to take delivery of. And about a year or so ago, I was approached by the folks at the Friends of the Fair across the road, the rodeo grounds, and they asked if it would be possible to put in a drinking fountain there that would include a water bottle filler. And so we went one step further, and we added not only a water bottle filler, but also a dog watering bowl as part of the drinking fountain. So we're waiting for that appliance to show up. And just last week, I was approached by the folks at Friends of the Fair and handed an envelope to cover the cost of that drinking fountain from the Friends of the Fair. So I want to acknowledge that and thank them for that very generous gesture.
Very cool.
It is this September, I believe, the 29th of September, as a part of National Public Lands Day, we want to plan a celebration to officially dedicate this site and then have a volunteer activity because we actually need to create a gateway from this facility to the actual trails, which is just on the other side. And so we're hoping to engage the community to come out with their rakes and shovels and once again help us create something special out of this site. So I was there Saturday. I drove by here, and this parking lot was almost full. So it's obviously being used. Thank you, Steve. In the Community Investment Department, code enforcement, as of the last report, over a three-week period, code enforcement staff received 44 new cases, performed 43 primary inspections, 64 follow-up inspections, sent two violation notices, and closed 52 cases. There are currently 44 open cases in code enforcement. In building permits, as of the last report, we have issued 279 residential single-family home permits. That is 15 more than the same time period last year. We've issued 18 new commercial building permits. That is nine fewer than the same period last year. And we performed 4,025 plan reviews. That's 338 more plan reviews than the same period last year. And performed 12,295 building inspections. That's 646 more inspections than the same time period last year. I shared with you a message that I sent out to staff. Because of the extreme heat conditions that are expected over the next week or so, I've directed staff to provide cooling stations for citizens or anybody who might need to take refuge from the heat. I'm seeing temperatures as high as 119 forecast. Certainly, that is not a comfortable place to be if you have to be outside. So we're going to be keeping an eye on our field crews, and any citizens who may need to take refuge from the heat can walk into any city facility that's open, and we will accommodate you. Special events coming up. We've got the Ultra Fest Boat Regatta on Saturday, June 17, at Rotary Park. That will be all day. And the celebrity softball game will be Saturday, June 24, at Sarah Park from 7:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. Natural question is, who are the celebrities? And I was informed that they are former Major League Baseball players as well as National Football League football players. Didn't get names, so I'm sorry about that. But come on out to Sarah Park on that evening, and you can find out for yourself. So, Mr. Mayor, that's all I have. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for the city manager?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Sure.
Charlie, do you know offhand what the cost was to relocate the bathroom to Sarah Park?
Greg, I want to say it was about... Oh, here we go. Ryan will know.
I don't have the exact figure off my head, but it was just under $30,000 in that. That was the transport over there, adding the plumbing to replumb it and to the sewer and get the drinking fountain and concrete up to it and all that stuff. So just under $30,000 for all of that relocated.
Does that include the solar?
Solar was actually part of the construction contract.
They've added solar to it because there's no power out there. So there are solar panels on the roof of that bathroom building that you see there.
Thank you. Great.
All right. We're going to move on to item eight, which is the public hearing portion of our agenda this evening. Item 8.1 is adopt ordinance number 17-1178, amending city code chapter 5.1 to alcoholic beverage license to delegate approval for special event, fair, festival, and extension of premise liquor license to reduce processing time. Ms. Gary?
Good evening, mayor and council. This item was introduced at the last city council meeting. There were some questions that were brought up during the meeting, one of them being what the county has decided to do with a request from the Department of Liquor License and Control. And what we discovered after staff contacted the county is that internal staff for the county received the request and decided that they wanted to continue processing it as they have been processing it, which is taking it to the council as we currently do. That request was never taken to the board for any formal consideration. So that's currently what the county is doing. We are aware that Bullhead City recently adopted a process similar to what we are proposing for the city council to adopt. Other questions related to the repayment or the payment of revenues to nonprofits? And that information, some follow-up information, has been provided to the city council. If the city council wishes to discuss that item further, it's not directly related to this item, and so it can be requested as in a future agenda item for further discussion so staff can get some direction and maybe bring it back if that's the desire of the council. Beyond that, I don't know if there's any additional questions. There was some information provided to you today about the refundable versus non-refundable application fee. When we were drafting the revisions to this ordinance, we recognized that there was a discrepancy between two of the sections, one which seemed to apply that the application fee was refundable and another portion that didn't imply that. And so when the revisions were made, we corrected it to say that it was refundable, and that actually was not correct. If you go back and look at the OPP, it clearly states that that's a non-refundable application fee. We look back at our history of how we've processed those. It's been processed as a non-refundable application fee. Whether it's denied at the city level or at the state level, city staff goes through the same process to analyze it and to make the recommendation. And so it doesn't make sense logically to have it be a refundable fee. And so we've asked that to be corrected in the motion if council agrees that it should be a non-refundable fee. And staff's happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Did the county say internally why they chose not to bring it to their council?
No, I don't know that we've asked that much detail. Just asked whether it had formally been considered by the board. It hadn't been. Staff had just decided internally that they wanted to keep it the way that it was. I think they didn't feel that it was an impediment on the processing time to take it to the board. But I don't want to put any kind of words in their mouth, but they just decided internally that they wanted to keep the process the same as it is.
Okay. And also, I know that we need to talk about it at a different time, but I would really like to look into putting that amendment on there for the verification of payments to the nonprofits.
Okay. And if we wanted that, let's do that at the request for future agenda items and just make sure there's a consensus of the council.
Other questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I just want to clarify, because we didn't talk about it so much this week as we did a few weeks ago. All this is doing is taking our current process, shortening it up, allowing a representative of the city to sign off on these permits so it doesn't have to sit here for weeks and weeks waiting for the council, such as this. We have three weeks between council meetings. It could already be approved. Should it be denied, they still have the option to bring it to the full council, and there is a remedy for that. So this is just to make government easier for everybody to get through.
Correct. It's a delegation of the approval authority to the city manager or designee. And then if there is a recommendation of denial, it can be appealed to the city council.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anybody like to address the city council on this matter?
Good evening, city council. My name is Frankie Lyons with Veterans United, Arizona. We are a 501(c)(3). We finally got our paperwork. I associate with several other nonprofits, and I have found that there's a couple that the liquor license request has been signed by non-organizational people. They're just sliding it through, and it's not being paid attention to. And I personally would like you guys to pay attention who was actually on a board to allow to sign that application for the license. Because there's... Once it's done, there's no regulation from you guys out there. And you cannot believe how many rules and regulations are being ignored out there. Underage servers, servers drinking while they're serving, and that's something that you guys need to make sure that they understand that they're liable for that. If anybody gets hurt, you know, and it comes back on them. But for a non-board member who's not even associated with the organization to sign a liquor license under their 501(c)(3) is just ridiculous. Thank you.
Not sure how that relates, but... Anyone else? All right, seeing none, we're going to bring it back to the city council.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Motion?
Please.
I move to adopt ordinance number 17-1178, amending Lake Havasu City code chapter 5.12 alcoholic beverage license to delegate approval for special event, fair, festival, and extension of premise liquor licenses to reduce processing time, but revise section 5.12.030 to state the following. "Any person desiring a license to manufacture, sell, or deal in spiritus liquors shall make application to the city on forms prescribed and furnished by the state's Department of Liquor Licenses and Control, and shall pay to the city at the time of making application the applicable fees." And revise section 5.12.050 to state the following. "If applicable, a non-refundable posting fee and application fee shall accompany the application for the license prior to the city initiating the licensing process." Second.
All right, we do have a motion and a second. Is there any additional discussion? Hearing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries six to one.
All right. Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to move on to item 8.2, adopt resolution number 17-3146, adopting the five-year community investment program, CIP, for fiscal years 2018 through 2022. Tabitha?
Good evening, mayor, city council. So what we are bringing back to you, you originally saw on April 27 during a work session, it is the community investment program. Just to let you know, we'll walk through the changes between that date and May 16, but there haven't been any changes to this program since. Reminder, you are adopting a five-year capital program, but only the first year is actually included in the budget. So you've got $104.5 million CIP over the five years, and we will include $33.4 million in the budget that you'll adopt in the next item, or we hope you'll adopt in the next item. Just another reminder, in order to make sure that we get projects completed, we always... We budget the first year, but we identify the funding for the next two years so that we don't run out of money and so that we know that once we start it, we at least have good assurances that we can finish those projects. The only exception to this is a few streets projects in the outer years, and some of this has to do with those design standards that we looked at a work session or two ago that we need to incorporate into the budget. This is just a summary to remind you of where we were when you originally looked at the detail on the CIP, and there have been three changes. The first one is a carryforward of the Water Main Replacement Project. This is simply moving money from the current year's budget, 1617, to next year. And then we had two increases. One was the water conservation implementation, and this is trying to plumb our parks and some of our other public spaces to use affluent instead of regular water in those areas. And then there was an increase to the reconstruction of the McCullough from Smoke Tree to Akoma. And so we've added to that a total of about $1.35 million. And you'll see that the total CIP now is the $33,447,047. And again, that will be included in the next item's budget. This is just a kind of a summary. It's not a list of all the projects, but it gives you sort of an idea of where we've budgeted money next year. Obviously, the water projects at the very bottom there is probably the largest percentage, but it also... The fields needs improvement, which is the fourth from the top. That's the Cypress Park project, and that's what's included in next year's budget. But there's a lot of projects here and a lot of areas being covered. It's pretty aggressive. This just happens to be that same information in a graph format, so you can kind of see how those play out. The one that I would point out to you is the airport at the top there, the 5%. The vast majority of that will be funded by grants from the FAA and Department of Transportation. So... And I know that's very brief, but I wanted to see if there were any additional discussion or questions that we can answer, and of course, we have the public hearing.
Any questions from council before I open up the public hearing? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anybody like to address the city council on this matter? Budgeting is always so exciting, I can tell. All right, we'll close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. I think we're ready.
I move to adopt resolution number 17-3146, adopting the five-year community investment program for fiscal year 2018 to 2022.
Second.
All right, we do have a motion and a second. Is there any final discussion? Hearing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries six to one.
All right. Thank you very much. Moving on to item 8.3, adopt resolution number 17-3150, adopting the fiscal year 2017-18 tentative budget. Tabitha?
Good evening again. See if this will pop up here. So this is the bigger piece of the budget pie and certainly the larger portion. What we're asking council to do tonight is actually adopt the tentative budget. This is kind of the first step in the formal process. What this does is that it will establish a cap or a limit on the total budget for the next year. And so when we bring back the final budget for you on June 27, it can be changed and it can be reduced, but it cannot be increased. So if there's anything that needs to be added, it has to be added tonight. But again, we do have flexibility later on. Just a reminder, this does include that $33.4 million in CIP projects that we looked at in the last item. I'm going to have... I have two slides here, and I just wanted to make sure because it's been a little while since we went through all the details at the May 4 work session. And I wanted to make sure that the council was aware of all of the changes that have happened since then. So this first slide is the changes that happened between the first work session and the second. So it's a recap... happened between the first work session and the second. So it's a recap of what we went over on May 16th, but because these are big numbers, I think it's important to go through. I'll start at the top, and you'll, you'll see the numbers that you recognize up there. That $148.5 million is the one that was in your original book, and I think it's also the one that the paper has referred to, and it was the original proposed budget. We've already talked about the carryforward of the water place, main replacement. Again, that's just simply moving money from 1617 to 1718. We also have a carryforward of a small amount for the fire station alerting system. This is something that wasn't, won't be able to be finished this year, so we're moving it forward. Same thing with the telestaff upgrade. This is actually the software that the fire department uses, both for tracking their time, and we use it in payroll to roll over into our payroll system. The CIP bond proceeds, this is $16 million. I doubt we'll issue the full $16 million this year, but at some point, we will probably run out of the last year's debt, and we'll need to issue that so that we can avoid running those CIP expenses through the expenditure limitation. So it's one of our answers there. Again, we've already talked about item five and six. It's simply two increases in CIP projects that we added at the last minute. Item seven and eight are kind of related, but there were some small adjustments in the PSPRS as far as the tier two and the tier three that have come out. Since that legislation came out a year ago, we have been in a frenzy of webinars and calls and changes with PSPRS, where they implement all of those changes. And so almost every week, we come out with something new, and this just happens to be something we found out after we had prepared the budget. So there's a little bit of a decrease, and then the $100,000 increase. And then item number nine was actually the request of council member she, he, which was to take a look at, see if we could actually bring the residential trash back in-house. And so we needed to increase the budget to accommodate that piece. That is offset, obviously, with revenue, but it is there. And so I'm gonna point you to the bottom line there, because it's gonna tie to the next sheet, which is the $152.5 million. So these are the changes since the May 16th work session on the next side. And again, we're starting out with that $152.5 million figure as our base. The first item, the energy lease payoff, we had talked about this at the May 4th meeting, and this is what we call the ECM. We'd like to pay those, those leases off early. It's one of our highest interest rates, and it's also one of our longer debt issuances. Unfortunately, in the last year, we missed the date to call those bonds, and we need to wait until November of 2015. So we've rolled forward that money into the next year. It also gives us a little bit of revenue associated with that, which is item number two. We get a small rebate on those energy conservation measures that we put into place several years ago. Item three, again, is a carryforward from 2016-17. It's something we're not gonna be able to finish, so we're gonna spend the money next year. Number four, the ERP consulting services. This is actually an add. It's something you have not seen, and it happens to be my department. We are, I know that we've talked a little bit about this, but we are replacing our computer system in this next year. And one of the things that we became aware of us, that none of us are experts in contracts on purchasing large software and hardware systems, and that we really needed somebody to look over our contracts, make sure that we were getting what we wanted, and help us with negotiating those terms. This is something that we're gonna live with for 15 years, and we don't want to, excuse the term, screw it up. So that money's there. The $60,000, also something that's happened since we put the budget together, is that the city manager has announced that he will be leaving at year end, and so we need to take care of the liability for the time that he's accrued, since he's been here. We've added back the plans examiner permit, excuse me, position. That was an outcome at the May 16th meeting. We've removed the interagency veterans court grant for $50,000. We've also added an additional $75,000 under eight. This is sort of a combination of several items. There's some money in here to cover the recruitment for the new city manager. It's a placeholder. You guys will decide how you want to use that money going forward. We also had missed some small fees that are associated with carrying on the PSPRS local board. There's a little bit of legal fees and a few items there that we needed to add back in. We also had not budgeted, we fund a portion of a transportation lobbyist through WACOG, and those monies hadn't been funded for the last couple of years, and so we added that in. And quite frankly, we rounded it up $2,000, just because there's something else somebody has forgotten to tell us about. So that's, that's the $75,000. Item nine, we got a final adjustment on our state shared revenue estimates from the leak of Arizona cities, and that increased slightly. And then the residential trash billing revenue, we've added back in a 20 cent per bill per month amount to cover the cost, the share of the billing expenses associated with that. So that's an increase in the revenue. So the bottom line is $155.2 million expenditure budget. So it's significant, but I think it's, we've certainly put some work into getting there.
But now the, on item seven, that's gonna increase to 125?
Yes.
Based on the announcement and call to the public?
Yeah. And as long as we're, we've brought that up, there's two ways we can deal with that. We can reduce the tentative budget that you adopt tonight by $125,000, and we can make the changes in the legal forms that are posted to, in the next couple of days, or we can bring it back in the final budget as a reduction. Because again, we can't increase the budget from tonight, but we can certainly reduce it when we bring it back on the 27th. This is just because we've spent a lot of time talking about the expenditure limitation, and one of the items that we, in our state budget forms, we send to the state, we post, is a reconciliation of where we think we're gonna end up with the expenditure limitation. And as you can see, 2017 is there, and our limitation. And 2018, the $49.6 million is really, this is a good number. It means we're below the 57.6, which is on line six. Let's see if I can get there. Right below that. That means at this point in time, we're about $8 million to the good, and that's great. I don't want us to all jump up and down and say it's solved at this point, because there's a couple of things at play here. One of it is that much of what we've put in this budget will probably carry through to 1819. If you remember, one of our plans is to issue debt upfront to pay PSPRS off for not only this year, but next year, and that's about $6 million. And then chances are, some of the capital budget will also carry forward, and so the debt associated with that potentially will carry forward. So while we think we've solved the problem, I don't think we're necessarily gonna end up $8 million to the good, but at least on paper, it looks good. And with that, I'll entertain any questions or any discussion from the council.
I just wanna, I know you sent me an email, but I also, I just want to confirm that the recent grant we got for veterans court, that's gonna be about $900,000 over the next three years, where that's gonna be, you're gonna move some things around, so it's budgeted in the court system, or?
Yeah, so it's all, so it's already, it is already included in the budget. And one of the things we do is we, we budget what we call nonspecific grants, which are grants that we haven't specifically identified, because we don't know whether or not we're going to get them. This is one of those grants. We've got $407,000 right now. We'll take, I think it's $316,000 and change, and we will specifically move it to the court so that we can track that grant there. And then next year and the following year, since we know the award, we'll actually include it as a, as a specific item in both of those year's budgets.
Does that leave us enough money in the nonspecific grant category?
It, it certainly should, given our, this is an item that we typically end up way over budgeting.
Okay.
And so I don't anticipate any issues. And Cassandra and I talked about this early on, whether or not we should plan for that possibility. The other thing is that if we had to, with 155, you know, .5 million budget, or 2.2 million budget, if we had to, we can come back to council and move money around. So we would not give up any potential grants that we would get based on budget. We would make it work.
Perfect. Other questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
We didn't specifically talk about it, because I don't believe it was a financial issue, but we were able to expand HAVSSU mobility to five days, eight to five, within this budget? Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Yes?
Just a comment, getting back to the, should we reduce the budget by that $125,000? I would suggest, since we had previously discussed converting what were formerly grants, grant-funded services over to contract for services, that until we decide whether or not we're going to have a list of services that we want to contract for, we maybe want to leave that line item in the budget for that, that possibility. If we don't spend it for that, then obviously, it stays in the general fund.
And anything that would be contracted would have to go out for a request for proposal?
Correct. That's a discussion we had. And on Thursday, Steph and I are going to sit down and look at all of the formerly grant-funded services that the Lake Havasu City government needs or wants to continue under a contract for services. And we will come back to you with a laundry list of those things that we would suggest go out to, to RFP, and then get some feedback from you as to what you think you do want to go out for bid on those contracts, and then we can carry forward with that. But obviously, we would, we would need to have a line item in the budget for that, for that possibility.
But it would be contracts with specific milestones, et cetera, as opposed to just a pure grant?
Correct. There would be a scope of work. There would be reporting. There would, yes, absolutely.
Okay. Anyone else? There it goes.
Oh, I would agree with Charlie to leave that money in the budget for that process, because we just don't know what it is, and we've, we've made it this far. So if the rest of the council concurs, if, you know, because we just don't know what that repercussion would be. I think that's a great recommendation.
Mr. Growth, did you have a comment?
I had a question, Mr. Mayor, but I believe council member, Chris McCoy, did you have your light on to speak?
No.
In the CIP budget, I don't, I don't know who can answer this question, but we'll see if somebody knows this. In the 1718, I'm looking at the FA 1020 in the budget. It's really the rainy or collector well, if you will. We have budgeted $1 million and change in 1718. My presumption is that that is to make the determination as to whether or not we have the appropriate geological substrate available to us to be able to use a rainy well. If not, then we have to either rework or create new vertical wells, which is a different arrangement, which of course is not budgeted until the next year, where we have a little over $4 million budgeted for that.
You are correct. And actually, if you happen to have your book, it's on page 60, but the total, the total budget, including $160,000 that was spent in prior years, is about $5.3 million. And you are correct, the first year, I think, is for looking at what the opportunities are, and the second, the 1819 is for construction. But if you really want to get specific, I'm gonna call one of the, either Jeremy or Greg up, because they'll, they'll be able to talk more about the project.
Could I please? Because I think it really makes a big difference whether we're in a rainy well environment, or whether we're going through and redoing a vertical well field.
Good evening, council. So yeah, to answer your question, currently, we are in the process of working with state lands to get access, to gain access, to do some testing, to identify if a specific location will work for a rainy well. If that location does not work, then we would look at other options for our water resources. And, and the funding identified for that rainy well could be used for either drilling new wells or rehabbing existing wells. And that's all being looked at and identified through the Water Master Plan update, which is currently under contract.
Do you have a sense, sir, of when we'll have some more information on what our results are?
Well, we're, we're hoping in the, in the next few months. I mean, a lot of that is really determined on whether we actually are granted access to that state property. So once that is given to Lake Havasu City, then we can get a contract out there to do some drilling. So we're hopeful in the next few months, we'll, we'll have access to do that, move forward with that work.
Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
There was a few things I wanted to bring up, but some people have already brought up some of the, the things that I wanted to talk about.
Okay.
One of them was interagency. I was gonna make a suggestion that we didn't fund interagency, but he took care of that himself, so we don't have to worry about that issue. But I also want to remind the people here in Lake Havasu what a good job interagency has done for the, the citizens here in this community, and the services that they have provided. And I hate to see us throw the baby out with the bathwater. And hopefully, they can rebuild and, and re-get their reputation and continue to provide services to the people here in, in Lake Havasu. The other thing I wanted to, to say was, when it comes to the other grant funds that we were going to give out, one of the things that I've learned recently, I mean, this is my first budget cycle, so I'm still learning some things, I think, but when it comes to these grants, people in this town are extremely, extremely generous when it comes to giving away their money. And they like to give to the nonprofits that they want to give to. They do not want us to be giving away tax dollars for those. So I was going to make a suggestion that the only things that we actually give grant money to this year would be essential services, one of those being Haven, who is feeding children during the school year on the weekends, to make sure that they don't forget and lose what they've learned during the week. And the other would be the search and rescue for their ropes. The other thing I was going to suggest is that we take $100,000 and put it aside, as the city manager has suggested. For request for proposals, should we have essential services that come up sometime during the year, so that we can go with contracts with any of the nonprofits here in town, to provide those services to the people? Because we do need to provide essential services to everybody here in Lake Havasu. Thank you.
You bet.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Can somebody answer the question? How long have we been doing this grant process this way?
Ever since I've been on council, and that's 10 and a half years.
Okay, so my concern here is that there was $194,000 that was put into grant money that we've been doing for the past 10 years. We had it allocated out that freestyle personnel was getting zero, Havasu Future was getting zero, Haven was getting 10,000, Lake Havasu Search and Rescue 2,000, Norona Effect zero, Social Services 125, somewhere out of the box, DBA Mile Markers 2,700, and Western Arizona Council Governments. I'm gonna have to disagree with Mr. Lane. I think that all of the money that was allocated for this year should go, I think that another $53,420 should go to Mile Markers. My reasoning behind this is, I talked to Katie Sandrell today, unfortunately, she couldn't be here. That money will be used to train staff, recruit staff, to use this material. And I believe interagency, in an email that I received from Tabitha earlier this week, their money that they used with 50,000 was to hire a counselor. So they used it for that same reasoning, correct?
That, that is one of the things they used, yes.
So by saying that they're okay to do that, and for, to say that Mile Markers wouldn't be able to use it, I have an issue with. And second thing is, if we have this extra money, I don't see why putting $10,000 in the Norona Effect wouldn't put a huge stake in Lake Havasu City, supporting her in what she's doing.
Could you define extra money?
We have 194,000. 175,000 is put back in there, and that's where it should stay.
Right. So why is that extra? That's just taxpayer dollars that we collect?
And it's been taxpayer money for 10 years, which has gone to grants. And it should continue this year until next year, when we decide, if we decide, not to go that road.
Right. And for years, we've been saying that we want to wean the nonprofits off of taxpayer dollars allocated by the city itself. The reason interagency got what they did is because they could leverage, as you heard, 117,000 of that into 540, so the community benefited by 400 and whatever that works out, 27,000. But in the end, they're giving it up. These are not federal funds that are, we must reallocate. These are taxpayer, sales tax, property tax dollars. We don't have to give a nickel. And what Mr. Lane is saying is that, and I, I tend to agree, that what I hear from the community is, you know what? If I want to make a donation, I will do that, but I do not want you making it on my behalf with taxpayer dollars. And so I do agree with Mr. Lane that what we ought to do is that if we have essential services and Mile Markers, if they decide it is an essential service, there will be $100,000 available with a, that we can allocate via a contract with clear milestones as to what they have to perform. But if it isn't essential services that the community says they want, then we won't. We'll go to some other. services that the community says they want, then we won't. We'll go to some other. It could be that we put 100 grand away, and we determine that there is not any essential service that the city should be responsible for, and we won't spend the money. I think that's the best way, quite honestly, to do it. I know I have been wanting to get away from this grant process for years. It used to be $350,000, which was way too much. And so, I'm glad we're actually at a point where interagency has walked up there and said, you know what? We'll figure out another way. And so, I think that allows us to move forward with the decision we were going to do anyway next year.
May I make a follow-up comment on that?
Sure.
And Ms. Lynn, I thoroughly agree with what you're saying. If it was good for interagency, why wouldn't it be good for Mile Markers? But I don't think it's good for interagency either. I don't think we should be giving tax, our city's taxpayer dollars, to these agencies, when it would be better to have a contract for any essential services, where we have checks and balances, and we know exactly what each and every dollar is being spent on, and not just giving them a grant block money and say, hey, here's the money, and do with it what you want. And I respect your opinion. I just, and I agree with part of it, it's just I don't agree with all of it.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I also think it's important that we clarify, $194,000 is just a placeholder. The council is who sets the budget. So, the staff had to put something in there. It's not this magical number that needed to be allocated out. So, it was a placeholder, we had the conversation. I think it would be in poor taste at this point to withdraw the opportunities that we've already said verbally that we would support. We had everybody here, they went through their presentations, they got the feedback from the council. We all agreed at that point. I certainly agree that we need to get rid of this program, and that's what we all agreed to do. But in the meantime, I think we should continue to fund the folks that we already said we would support in this grant process for this year.
Yeah, I think the additional amount's 2,700 for Mile Markers, is that correct? Okay.
And 3,000 for the WACO program. Yeah.
Oh, there was 3 grand for WACO? Is that, is that correct? There was 3 grand for WACO?
No, it was only 2 grand for WACO, 2,000, 2,700 for Mile Markers, and then that leaves the Haven 10,000, and Lake Havasu Search and Rescue at 2,000. And if we've done our math right, it's a total of $16,700.
Yeah, I do agree with you. It was a placeholder, it's certainly not excess. I think the folks in the audience would say, well, if it's excess and you don't need it, how about writing us a check back to us? So, but what we'll do is use it for other essential services. And after all, we're going to be putting in about $18 million worth of parks. So, clearly, we can utilize it there.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to say I also agree with that. I mean, you know, we're putting in the parks. Every organization, every parent, they want something for their family, for their kids. And, you know, we're trying to budget so that everybody gets a little piece of the pie. But I think really, the taxpayers would prefer that we do, for the city, that we do essential, and let them do the donations to whatever organization is near and dear to their heart.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
As far as the, when we first started this conversation, 194 was a placeholder. We also, garbage service was going to be on the outside. We were down one plans review, the parks weren't where they were at, mobility was four days a week from 8 to 2. So, it just was a placeholder for the conversation to happen. And now, all of the numbers have been able to flow, and we've been able to really meet the goals of the council, the citizens, and be able to make all of the pieces come together. So, it just is a placeholder and not a thing that needs to be allocated.
Okay.
Mayor?
Yes?
And we'll just reiterate that, exactly what the mayor said, over the last years of having this conversation, the same time every year, I think we've made the same statement to everybody who applied, was if you get, if you get money from us this year, we want to see next year that you're trying to do something so that you're not here asking for the same amount that you're asking for or getting this year. And so, it's just been a process over the last years, I think the last six that I've been here, that we try to do away with this process. And going with a contract just crosses everybody's Ts and dots the Is.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I can agree to disagree with the other council members. I just want to make a comment. I have received no emails, I have received no phone calls, I have seen nobody stand at that podium in the last two months, saying that we were wasting the city taxpayer money on grants. And it's been said a lot up here that we're doing the best for what the city's asked. I haven't had one person come up here and say, we're not doing right by the city's money with the grants.
No, they don't have to come up to the podium. They can send me emails, talk to me in the grocery store. There's a lot of ways that our citizens communicate with us, including yourself. And most of the citizens I talk to say, please, do not use my tax dollars to make donations. And I've been on council for now 10 and a half years, and I get that comment routinely every year. So. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor, may I?
Please.
Thank you. This is a, kind of a interesting conversation. It marks a very big difference between government and private business. You see, a lot of this conversation is placed around what amounts to 1/10th of 1% of this budget. Yet, our parks, which amounts to about 12% of the budget, is worth $20 million, and we know that our public safety personnel retirement system requires some $51 million and change of funding. That's a train that's coming at us, whether, whether we like it or whether we don't. And we haven't contributed very much of our time and effort to that conversation. I think that's an important conversation. Obviously, along with our drinking water, that's another thing, because I'm fond of saying, without water, nothing else matters. But in the case of what has transpired here, are things called traditions, and things that are customarily done, that this process, while painful, has been a tradition in our community. And the nice thing about budgets is that they don't transpire all in the same meeting. You get several meetings, and you get to have the input from, from your community, and hear what people are saying, and what they think, and how they feel. And sometimes, things just resolve themselves. Sometimes they don't. Sometimes they take a different turn. It's just been my observation that over the last couple of months in this process, I now hold it to be self-evident that the people of this community, in an overwhelming manner, would like to have seen the Norona Effect funded for the work that they're doing. I can't say that I disagree with them on that. But this entire process, I think, has been a little bit painful. And I think it's distracted us, to some degree, from the very important work of separating out the nice-to-haves and the need-to-haves, the core business of our municipality. And that's where I would like to see more of our focus. I understand this is painful and emotional to some people. But I just wanted to say that, I believe that the Norona Effect is a very fine organization. What they are trying to do is noble, trying to have the ability for children to have blood transfusions, in particular, those who might need it on an emergency basis, but also those who might need it in terms of chemotherapy and other sorts of treatments for life-threatening diseases. I believe about 1/3 of the patient population that goes through one of the more commonly-used hospitals in Las Vegas all come from Lake Havasu. So, there are certain cases to be made, but as I looked at that, I said to myself, what is the message that we are sending if we, if we do not support that organization? And then they go out, and they have to try and receive support from surrounding communities, because such a clinic that they are proposing wouldn't just be for Lake Havasu. It would also serve kids, probably from California, from Parker, from, from Kingman, from Bullhead City, from all around the area, from the region. I just think it's important for everybody to think about that. And I just wanted to say those things.
All right, thank you very much. All right, any other comments or questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I'm going to change the subject. Tabitha, can you go back to the summary of changes?
Did you need the one since, 2,000, since May of 16th, or the one prior?
No, this is perfect.
Okay.
The number five, the add city manager PTO payoff. So, what we received in our agenda package is the first time that we were able to see this. Can you explain how that works?
It's, it's pretty simple. It's basically just the time, the paid time off that the city manager has accrued since he started work with the city. And so, what it is, is when he leaves employment, we will owe that back to him as pay. So, that's, it's an additional item that we did not budget, because we didn't foresee the city manager leaving in this particular fiscal year. So, it was an add at the last minute. And again, it happened kind of between the original budgets session and this one.
Is there, is there a maximum amount of overtime that they're allowed?
It's not overtime, it's, it's paid time off. So, it's basically the equivalent of, it's a combination of sick and vacation time that we as employees receive.
And there's not a cap on that?
There is. Is it for, I'm going to have Shirley come up and talk a little bit more. She's, she's the one who probably can tell you more about the benefits.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Lynn, the cap is currently set at 420 hours annually at December 31st. So, throughout the year, employees can exceed that annual cap. But on December 31st, it's reduced back or rolled back to 420 hours.
Anyone else? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anybody like to address council on this matter? Seeing none, we're going to close the public hearing.
Mayor?
Yes?
Motion?
Please.
I move to adopt resolution number 17-3150, adopting fiscal year 2017-18 tentative budget.
I'll second that.
Okay, we do have a motion. And a second, is there any final discussion? Hearing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries 5 to 2.
All right, thank you very much for all your hard work. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to item 8.4, approve addendum number 3 to city manager employment contract with Charlie Cassens.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. This item tonight is as a result of the executive session two weeks ago, and the announcement of the city manager that he has intended to retire at the end of this calendar year. So, rather than enter into a new contract, we simply crafted an addendum, this would be the third addendum to the current contract, extending the date to the end of this year. And I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
So, he's retiring on the 29th of December?
That is correct. That is the intent.
So, could you please bring in that ball and chain on the 28th of December, and make sure he gets locked to his desk?
I have already brought in the ball and chain.
Okay, good. Questions? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anybody like to address the city council? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Motion?
Please.
I move to approve addendum number 3 to city manager's employment contract with Clarence L. Charlie Cassens.
Second.
Okay, we do have a motion. And a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries 6 to 1.
All right, item 8.5, approve city magistrate employment contract with Mitchell Kalali.
Shirley? Okay, thank you, Mayor. This item is the contract as a result of the executive session and the satisfactory evaluation that occurred on May 23, 2017. This is a two-year employment contract as outlined by the executive session.
All right, questions from council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Just satisfactory sounds so dull, but it was a favorable evaluation. So, I just want to make sure that that is out there.
Did you say satisfactory sounds adult?
No, it sounds dull.
Oh, dull, okay, thank you.
Yeah, so, it is a favorable.
It's like, I don't know that I've ever been accused of sounding adult.
All right, this is a public hearing. Would anybody like to address council on this matter? I'm trying to make Mitch nervous by holding the time. All right, we'll close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
A motion?
Please.
I move to approve the city magistrate employment contract with Mitchell Kalali.
All right, we do have a motion. And a second, is there any final discussion? Hearing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries 7 to 1. I'm sorry, 7 to 0.
Wow, we added a council member. Yeah, I tried to vote twice, but. All right, item 8.6, approve city attorney employment contract with Kelly C. Gary. Ms. Palvick?
Okay, this item is a result of the favorable evaluation from the May 23, 2017 executive session and direction provided thereof.
Comments or questions? All right, once again, this is a public hearing. Would anybody like to address council on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Motion?
Yes, please.
I move to approve the city attorney employment contract with Kelly C. Gary.
Second.
All right, we do have a motion. And a second, is there any additional discussion? We're ready to vote.
Motion carries 7 to 0.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, item 8.7, approve total expenditures over $50,000 for uniform purchases to Universal Police Supply Company for fiscal year 2016-17.
Good evening, Mayor and council. This is one of our uniform vendors that we normally use. We had a one-time purchase using another funding source that's going to cause us to exceed the $50,000 limit. Happy to answer any questions.
Questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Are this just for the standard uniforms, or are there special uniforms that are included in this, or?
They do our uniforms, our gun belts, different things like that. And the one-time purchase was for new holsters, for the entire department, using a different funding source through our RICO funds.
Excellent, thank you.
All right, this is a public hearing. Would anybody like to address the city council? Seeing none, we're going to close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Motion?
Please.
I move to approve expenditures over $50,000 with Universal Police Supply Company for fiscal year 1617. Second.
All right, we do have a motion and a second. Is there any final discussion? We're ready to vote.
Motion carries 7 to 0.
All right, thank you. Item 8.8, approval of a final subdivision plat for Villas de Soule condominiums, creating 11 residential airspace units. Stuart?
Thank you, Mayor and council. This is a final subdivision plat, the properties at the corner of Havasu Bay and Kaohua. This doesn't necessarily require a public hearing. Typically, these are on the consent agenda. However, this made it to your agenda. So, we're asking you to approve the subdivision plat. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Is there any questions for Stuart? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anybody like to address the city council on this matter? Seeing none, we're going to close the public hearing.
Mayor?
Yes?
Motion?
Yes, please.
I move to approve the final plat for Villas de Soule subdivision, creating 11 airspace units on track 2226, block 12, lot 15.
All right, we have a motion. And a second, is there any final discussion? Hearing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries 7 to 0.
Thank you very much. Item 8.9, approve addendum number 2 to cellular tower lease agreement with New Singular Wireless PCS LLC. Mr. Frozly?
Mr. Mayor?
Thank Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Uh, as you indicated, this is an addendum number two to an existing, uh, land lease agreement for a cell tower. This particular tower is, is located on Cisco Drive, specifically twenty-seven-eleven Cisco Drive South. If you can see my, my cursor right here, it's located on this city-owned piece of property. This is Cisco El Dorado for reference. And this is Smokey over here. The original, uh, agreement for this tower was executed in March of two thousand and twelve. The, uh, the original agreement had, excuse me, had a few provisions worth noting tonight. One was to actually allow for three additional, um, term extensions of five years. The recommended action tonight will execute that first, uh, extension of, uh, five years to this term. The other one was a provision to, uh, increase the base rent by four percent annually. So, we're, uh, collecting just over three thousand, three thousand and forty-one dollars and sixty-three cents with this new addendum number two. Uh, we verified, uh, that that is still commensurate with the industry standard on a national level. Uh, we found that it's actually a little bit higher than the, uh, than the average. So, that's, with that good news, uh, I'm happy to answer any questions that we're asking for approval this evening.
I want, I want to ask the city attorney, what, there's a new, um, Arizona law, I think on small cell. How does this?
I don't believe it's applicable to what we're doing here.
Okay.
Um, I do know that some of the cities are working on a model ordinance for us to look at. There's some discrepancy about when that necessarily has to be in place. But for sure, it has to be in place by February of next year. So, we will be working to get those regulations into our city code. But as of right now, um, what we're proposing is, is fine.
But will that new law make this contract null and void at some date?
No, I only believe that it applies to the small cells, and this is not what is.
This isn't small cell.
Correct.
Got it, okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Hearing none, this is a public hearing. Would anybody like to address the city council on this item? We're going to close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Motion?
Yes, please.
I move to approve addendum number two to cellular tower lease agreement with New Singular Wireless PCS LLC. Second.
All right, we do have a motion and a second. Is there any final discussion? We're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. And our final public hearing of the evening, approve change order number one for the water system improvements with ABC Asphalt Inc. Ryan.
I think it's going. Good evening, Mayor and council. Uh, this is for first change order to our water main replacements project that's currently under construction. What this change order consists of is, uh, additional asphalt replacement outside of the trench width for the main line. The reason we need to replace asphalt outside that area is due to damage that was caused to the asphalt as part of the main breaks on the main lines that we're replacing. So, we're replacing a total of seventeen hundred and five square yards for a cost of sixty-two thousand eight hundred and fifty-five dollars and ten cents. And then we've got to add some days to their contract to allow them to complete that additional work. There's four streets out of approximately twelve that we are doing this additional, uh, placement. You can see here, the, uh, lighter gray is the standard trench width for the main line. And the darker hashed area outside is the extra paving that we're doing. Uh, this is on Patio Sempatico. I unfortunately wasn't able to find good pictures of it. But this whole corner was, uh, very rippled from a lot of the, um, when the main breaks, you know, disturbs the soils underneath the asphalt and it starts to settle and, and, and create, uh, not-so-nice drivable surface and, and was in the, in need of attention. Bamboo Court was another one. Unfortunately, almost that whole bubble at the end was in some, need of some help in about half of the street going down. I do have some photos there. You can kind of see the condition it was in from patchwork and, and again, settlement of the asphalt from the main breaks. Um, I don't know if this quite is clear, but this whole kind of area that looks like water is, uh, settled, uh, good few inches down. A few more shots of, of the condition of the pavement that we'll be replacing. Clark Court just had this small patch. Um, I believe this was a service leak in front of this property that, uh, took out some of the pavement in the process. And, and, uh, they, they patched back in the meantime. But we will be, uh, replacing as we go through there. Obviously, it makes a lot of sense to do that while we're putting the main lines in, to reduce the inconvenience, uh, to the community and not have to go in there twice. And also, uh, you know, we get a little better value on that because the contractors are already mobilized to, to pave the trench width. Uh, Glengarry Drive was the last one. There's a stretch there. You can see a lot of the patchwork from the different breaks, um, over the, over the years. And, and, you know, some of these breaks happened between, um, design and, and construction time. And so, uh, you know, we weren't able to quite, um, get, capture all the limits at time of, uh, design and, and that contract. So, we need to add it on. There's just a few more photos of the existing conditions. And with that, I'll take any questions you might have.
Questions from council?
Mr. Mayor, I do have a question on this.
Okay.
Uh, looking at some of these road beds, it looks like it's, the asphalt is in really bad shape there. Are we expecting any damage to the road bed itself? Are we going to be able to just take up the asphalt and put new asphalt over it without having to lay a, a new bed down too?
Um, in the areas where there's settlement and whatnot, they will be, they will backfilling and compacting the subgrade below the new asphalt that they put in so that the subgrade is in good condition as well.
Excellent, thank you.
Anyone else? All right, this is our final public hearing. Would anybody like to address the city council on this matter? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Motion.
Please.
I move to approve change order number one for the water system improvements to ABC Asphalt Incorporated.
Second.
All right, we do have a motion and a second. Is there any final discussion? Hearing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Okay, thank you. Okay, current events, are there any council committee reports?
Mr. Mayor, I do have a committee report.
Okay.
Uh, I'm actually pleased to announce to the citizens of Lake Havasu that the, uh, Havasu Marine Association, in conjunction with the, uh, Arizona Game and Fish Department, is expanding their boat registration services in the city of Lake Havasu. And effective, uh, the third week of this month, you will now be able to register your boat in Lake Havasu on Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, uh, which is the third week of the month. So, from now on, the third week of the month, three days of during that week, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, you can go over to the MVD office, go around back, and there will be an office open. And there will be a representative of the Marine Association and Game and Fish there to register your boats here in Lake Havasu.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Uh, I'll make this really short. I have a WACOG, um, report from the Mojave County Advisory Council. Uh, this is the fourth quarter report. As, uh, before, they're struggling because of the proposition two oh six, which was the increase of minimum wage. So, that, um, the needs have gotten higher, and they're able to help fewer people. But they are looking for bits and pieces of little grants that they can put together, uh, to help cover things. What they noticed is there's more family participation in the needy. And, um, also, um, they just wanted to report that, um, hopefully, that with these little bits and pieces, they can continue the home-delivered meals for the people that can't get out. But it looks like this is a one-time funding, so they'll be looking for more in the future. Um, they also have a little funding for the rapid rehousing and temporary emergency shelter. So, if anybody falls within that category, they should contact, uh, WACOG. And I just want to give a, a high five to our Mojave Electric and Unisource for helping out with the weatherization funding that they have donated to help people of, uh, low income and the outreach programs. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, item ten's our final call to the public. Would anybody like to address the city council? Seeing none, future meetings, Tuesday, June twenty-seventh, two thousand seventeen. At six PM, we will have our regular meeting and our final budget adoption. On July eleventh, two thousand seventeen, which is also a Tuesday, and at six PM, we will have a regular meeting, and we will adopt the final property tax levy. And on Tuesday, July twenty-fifth, two thousand seventeen, at six PM, we will have another regular meeting. Future agenda items.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Kelly, maybe you can help me out on this. So, if I want to put a future agenda item on for the verification of the payment to nonprofits, is this where I do that?
Yep.
Okay. I would like to do that, please.
And if it's okay with council, if we bring that item back as just a general discussion item and, and talk about it generally, maybe what some other cities might be doing as far as process? Because I don't know whether, i- if council's interested in that, whether it would be via ordinance, via an internal process only. So, I don't want to draft anything trying to, to figure out what you want to do.
Yeah, I think just, let's find out if other cities are doing anything similar and what they are and how they deal with it.
And we can bring back any staff recommendations, things that we see regarding that. And if we do that as a general discussion item, that'd be great.
Okay. Any other future agenda items? All right, is there a motion to adjourn? All right, unless there's an objection, we are adjourned. Thank you all for being here.